Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting of February 20th, 2019. Can I have the roll call, please?
Peg Coniff, Eric Salem Derby, Omar Gomez,
Here.
David Kozinski.
Here.
Phil Lynch.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owens Eric.
Here.
Go please stand us for pleasure of allegiance. Pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of a minutes of February 6?
No move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions opposed? Okay, motion passes. Public speak time, is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for any topic other than what's on the public hearing? This would be your opportunity, if you could just come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay. We can move on then to communications from elected boards. So I believe we have a speaker, is that right, Councilor Peak?
That's correct.
For their telecommunication advisors, so if you would introduce him, that would be terrific.
Sure. Greg Howe, the Chair of the Telecommunication Advisory Committee, would like to come and give a little progress update on the work that we've been doing.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember. Since we were mandated in May of 2018, we have made some progress. You should have a memo in your packets, which I will summarize essentially. We have done a lot of due diligence, we've looked at a lot of different technologies. One of the ones that stands out most to us is fiber. It is as much, as an IT professional, and as much as I hate using the word "future-proof", it is probably one of the most future-proof technologies that we have. The highest ends of fiber at this point haven't even been plumbed. We do know that in a lab setting, they can, they are getting speeds in excess of like 300 gigabits per second, which is phenomenally fast. And so, that, along with the knowledge that there are tremendous number of other communities that are adopting fiber or looking into fiber at this point. Northampton tomorrow is actually voting to, the actual words here, are, voting to propose spending $80,000 in fiscal year 2020 and 2021 to study the viability of the, of Northampton becoming a municipal light plant and going to fiber. And that's just one of several others. I'll actually, if it pleases the council, I will email you guys a list of different towns that are, have either adopted, who are in progress, and what their statuses are. And if anybody has any questions.
I certainly would appreciate that list, thank you very much.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Somewhere in the reading of things, and you just said it, a light plan?
Municipal light plant, yes.
Municipal light plan. Can you in 30 words or less dumb it down for me?
Yes, absolutely. So what a municipal light plant involves is the community becoming essentially a municipal utility.
Is it just a designation?
It's a designation.
Okay.
It does need to be voted in by the council in two fiscal years, and then it needs to be sent to the population for a vote.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor. Quick summary on that, my understanding is it doesn't require the city to operationalize any particular light plan or become a public utility.
Not at all.
In any way. It just enables that process to move forward.
Exactly correct, and it costs nothing to do.
That's good.
We like those.
Right.
Counselor Zerret.
Thank you. Reading through the packet, and thank you, this is very well summarized, the work that you've done so far, and thank you to the entire committee for.
It was, it was definitely a labor of the whole committee.
Every time I use Charter, I think about you guys.
Me too.
You mentioned cost estimation, and in the.
We do have cost projections, I believe that we'll be addressing those at a later point.
Okay.
Roughly, we've got, worked with a couple of different vendors at this point to get an idea of what they propose and what they think, as well as some of our own projections.
Okay, because in the letter you had mentioned potentially budgeting money in order to undertake a study for cost estimation.
That would be something that we would like the, the committee at some point to address and to look at.
Do you have an idea how much just that study would cost yet, or am I getting too, you could say no.
I don't off the, off the top of my head.
Alright.
It's, yeah, I don't have it in the paperwork unfortunately. And I don't want to give you the wrong information, just a problem.
Absolutely, absolutely, but thank you for all the work you're doing.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? No, thank you very much for the.
You're welcome.
And the, and the letter as well, thank you. We do have some communications, I believe from the planning board, related to an easement approval saw connection with a solar array project on Park Street, so I think probably be treating that as, as new business, I think it believed it came from the city planner. So, I'll turn your motion to move this easement request to property.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Boy, it just seems like yesterday, the city clerk does include in a packet a notice of the 2019 biannual elections, it's already on the, on the horizon, so we just have to make a, a public announcement that we've received the election calendar. Election day will be Tuesday, November 5th, and obviously, be more information coming as that goes, but that's the first notice of that. Additional correspondence, information about off-on-street parking review, which is already an ordinance, Counselor Zerret, or, I don't know if you have additional information on that?
It's in the packet, do you want to speak to it, Counselor Kaff?
Come back.
Thank you. Counselor Derby submitted some supplementary materials which are now where, available in the packet, they were available at the ordinance subcommittee meeting, I think there was some initial misunderstanding of the language that was submitted with the initial agenda item at the last meeting that included language from Austin, Texas, as just an example of what other municipalities have done with this discussion, but I think it may have been misconstrued by the public, that was our intention to copy that language, which it was not. And Counselor Derby thankfully submitted some clarifying language for the ordinance subcommittee, which we used as bullet points to discuss these, these issues, parking lawns and safety around parking in public streets, that's available in the packet, which will be, is therefore available to the public, so that's really all I wanted to mention, but it was, it was helpful, we had actually a really productive ordinance subcommittee, which I will report on later.
Okay, great, thank you very much for that information. Mayor Communications, Mayor Les Chappell.
First, I'd like to thank members of the telecommunications committee for their expedient work, for bringing such a, a committee to fruition. I think every month or so, there's an article or more information coming our way, while a thorough investigation of a municipal light plan and how we can provide consistent internet access is more and more important to East Hampton's success, and, and thank you all for that. I do have some information, Counselor Kozinski, around legal bills and appropriations that I've asked for, for $50,000. I have some of the copies here, as well as a historical report on expense, so I'm going to keep one of these.
Mayor, is it possible to have those electronically delivered to us?
Yes, I wanted to get hard copies out because they just became available.
Okay, cool.
But it's coming, if you want hard copies now.
I would.
Sure. Just to inform the council, the finance committee requested these for our preparation.
So, I wanted to, to get the information out and electronically. I would also like the consideration of, for the city council to adopt GLC 64G Section 3A, which is a local room occupancy excise tax, and really what I'm going to for that is, we don't have any hotels, but we do have a growing Airbnb population or rooms available. There is additional stress, I would say welcome stress onto infrastructure, because more people are here and coming and accessing, but would, would like to follow up with, with a tax around that, this has just become available, you know, in this last couple of months, and something that we've been working on, on MMA level with other mayors, to, to have Governor Baker allow such a local option and to a tax on such short-term rentals. The consideration. And absent questions, that's.
Counselor.
I was just going to ask that the city council move this to finance for review as a motion.
Second. Okay, motion, second to move finance, the request from mayor for the adoption of the room tax, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Okay.
For this tax you were talking about, do we know the inventory of rentals today this would impact, or, well, I'll just stop there. Do we have an inventory of short-term rentals in the community that we know of that will be impacted, or the people renting them will be impacted?
Official, no, I mean, we've pulled, or I, I pulled some time ago, just inventory off of a couple of the room share, home share, Airbnb being one of the biggest ones. In pursuing this, there would be a more official registration with the city and maybe on the state level. Minnesota has something very similar to this, and there's an official registration that goes up to the state, I want to see, Minneapolis definitely has it. And it's almost like a hotel tax, it's very, you're registered with this number of rooms, there's a decision to be made by, you know, how many times you can rent before the tax, you know, you do it around graduation time, but if it's a regular thing, and then that's reported out, and then the tax is assessed that way. But I don't have a, a hard number, no.
Additional questions for the mayor?
Is it possible to get some of that information together for the finance committee consideration?
That's not.
You needn't be there.
That's not anecdotal?
That's not anecdotal, maybe a procedure, a suggested procedure as to how we would collect the information, anything that we might require of.
I, I would say that.
Renters, an inspection of the facility, I don't, I don't know.
I see it as two different processes. One, the adoption, if, if the council and finance subcommittee would be willing to adopt such a tax, as I've asked, and then the procedures to be worked out and in collection, and we would, we would also be looking for guidance with DLS, Division of Local Services and Department of Revenue, on, on what can be applied. And there were some guidance from, you know, Governor Baker's office of, of the number of days, and, you know, there already, things are rolling, and Northampton has adopted this, and, and Boston is kind of carving out the same thing.
So the request for finance is relatively narrow, do you want to adopt this tax?
Yes.
Everything else, how it's going to be done, how are we going to find them?
Yeah.
Will be approached with other help from other agencies? Okay, any additional questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Standing committees, I think we have time to maybe do at least finance, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, first of all, I want to make a motion to put a public hearing for our first meeting in March for the $800 supplement to the city legal advertising budget, and the $50,000 supplement to the city attorney professional services budget. In a request of a motion, that should be a public hearing at 6:15 in East Chambers for the first meeting in March.
I just would like to.
We have a second for the motion.
Second.
Okay, there's a second then, and what's your comment, Counselor Kozinski?
I would like to have a chance to review the data that we had in committee.
We're going to have a meeting next week.
Correct.
Before we set a public hearing on the matter.
I would disagree only in that we can always continue the public hearing, it's two weeks away. I don't want a budget to go into deficit, but we'll see what happens on the 27th, if you don't get the information.
If we had had the information sooner and we'd been able to digest it, I'd be able to vote on it in the affirmative tonight, I will not be voting in the affirmative.
To set the.
Because of time.
Okay, I mean, as the council says, you can always, we can always, if you don't feel you have the information, we can always continue a public hearing, but I.
I just would like to start the public hearing with having discussed this with the finance committee in a public session.
Or the idea you, the idea you would, because the public hear, you'll have another meeting before that public hearing.
Before we set the public hearing.
Okay. Yeah, that's your prerogative for sure. So we do have a motion to set a public hearing and a second for March 6th on the topic Counselor Rist just mentioned. Additional comments, Counselor Kozinski, I want Counselor Rist, do you have?
I simply feel that we should set the public hearing, again, because I don't like financial matters which might impact the city's budget, to linger unless absolutely necessary. However, I agree with Counselor Kozinski, we can't continue the public hearing and not vote on it on that, if the information he requires is not available. So I would like the council to set the public hearing.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just, it, it, there was such a large differentiation between what we budgeted, which was, and it's approximately three or four times as much money being requested, that's why I think it's important that the council really sit and thoroughly go through the material before we set a public hearing.
Yeah, and I get, I mean, it could be.
It was, it was a huge expenditure.
Right, my one concern is, if we're ready to vote, then we have to wait additional two weeks, I'd rather that we aren't ready versus miss an opportunity to vote on something if we aren't ready. Counselor Rist?
Counselor Lynch, what is your feeling on this, because I will go with the majority of the finance committee, if you feel you'd like to delay, I'll remove the motion.
No, I, I think that two weeks should be fine, and then we can do a continuation.
If we need.
I think, I think we can iron out a lot of it over the next meeting.
Hopefully we can.
If we can, we can just, we can move it forward.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to hear.
So a motion, a second, and a couple of comments and additional comments before a vote, okay, all those in favor send the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
And if one, no, and no abstentions, okay, motion still passes.
That sets public hearing for both the $800 and the $50,000.
Okay.
I might also.
Send the 800, if may I?
Okay, so we'll separate so that there's a vote.
There's, there's, there's two, there's separate public hearings.
Separate public hearings.
There's two separate public hearings.
On the same.
On the same day. Oh.
Yeah, so we maybe, so we have a different vote for, so.
I get what you're saying.
You want to do one motion?
I will do the second motion for the $800 this time.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, set public hearing for March 6th for the $800, additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. President, we have before us, you've all had a handout of the request for the budget, properly prepared by the clerk, it includes a narrative which is the same as last year. The budget includes an increase in our advertising area because of the nature of our legal requirements, when you, for instance, have to do a bond advertisement, it gets pretty expensive, it's a lot of words. And at the request of Counselor Kozinski, the committee also agreed to add in-state travel, $300 to this year's request, which previously did not have any money in it. And we supported this because we were very happy to have Counselor Peak report on the MMA conference, and this may encourage more counselors to go, even if one goes, they could apply for reimbursement of some of their expenses, and as Counselor Peak indicated, he got a lot of good information, so I think this is a good thing to add, and we're hoping the mayor will agree. So, if there's no questions, I'll move that we accept this budget and send it to the mayor. Counselor Coniff, sorry.
So, that's fine, but to me, when you think about a budget that encompasses nine people, it can't be that all 300 of that goes to the first person out the gate, it has to be divided up into nines, and so we're talking $35 per person for any event that they want to go to, that would be their, their, that was the, that was the point of us taking it off the table, because the amount was so insignificant that if we just gave it to the first person who came in in January and went to a meeting, it would be wiped out. If there's another meeting that I wanted to go to in September, there would be no budget. So we have to either do it in a way that each of us has the opportunity to draw from that fund equally throughout the year, and perhaps we have an over, you know, a surplus at the end of the year, perhaps not, but to me, as, as much as I would think it would be awesome to reimburse you for all your expenses, that doesn't seem equitable to me, that, that now none of us would be able to do anything for the rest of the year and get reimbursed for.
Counselor Zerret.
I, I would concur with Counselor Coniff, that it's sort of like, in my professional field, we get continuing education credits, this is sort of like that, where you, when you take trips, I mean, with any profession, I do think that, we agree that 300 divided by nine is 20, 27 point something. So it, it, you know, it, it, it's not 27, anyways, it's 30 something, it's, anyhow, I agree that the, the, it has to be divided equitably, it has to be a sum that's made available to each counselor, not first come, first served, and then it has to, that sum then has to be a reasonable amount to actually cover travel expenses, so I would recommend that, that, that some be either reconsidered, or how it's afforded to be reconsidered, that's all.
Counselor.
The counsel relates.
We went into that discussion and said, what's a fair amount, and we talked about $100 per council, that's $900, you know, to go from zero to 900 is a huge jump, so kind of to build that, to see where we can go, see how it's used, and kind of start at a starting point, that was kind of where we settled, we went back and forth between $500, $1,000, and, and we settled on 300, just to kind of get the ball rolling and, and have it on the budget, and if you look in past budgets, there was, there was a very minimal, I think it was 100 bucks, for the whole council, so we, we know it was taken off, but we kind of just looked at it in that, in that regards.
Rist, I saw.
No, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, okay, Counselor Peak, because you guys already talked, so Counselor Peak.
Oh no, he had his end up before me.
But they've already talked.
It's actually a rule.
Okay, cool, with, I mean, I guess the only thing that I would say about a equitable distribution is that, the, the, the counterpoint that I would see is that not everybody has the ability, or the time, or the willingness to travel and stay overnight and do these things, I mean, we all could have gone to that thing, and, you know, it was no more of a financial constraint for, for anyone else than it was for me, and so, I mean, I do think that going forward, if we say, we're going to split this up nine even ways, then the issue that we run into is what happens when someone says, no, I got to stay home with the family, or I've got a, you know, I've got other obligations, I'm not going to be able to travel, does that money just not get spent? Would it be more efficient for the money to be then spent on people who are willing to do that extra work? Just a thought to consider. I do think it would be advantageous if at some point, I don't know if it's this year, we could get around to finding some, I don't know, maybe it's grant money or something, for us to get the sort of continuing education, because there's a lot of exciting stuff that other municipalities are doing, and we'd all be better for learning more about that, but it's time, and it's schedule conflicts, and sometimes these things don't happen.
Counselor Zerret.
I, I don't disagree with you, but the issue is that if you take a trip, for instance, in January and then apply for reimbursement, and you're reimbursed, you're reimbursed a total amount, and I choose, let's say in March, to go as the ambassador to New Orleans for the council, which I think would be completely reasonable. That money would be gone, right?
Yeah, no, I hear.
And so, I think that the, whatever you determine is ultimately the budgeted amount, the, the amount that any one council should be able to be reimbursed should be up to X amount, that should be equal to, you know, that, that amount divided by nine.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah, I guess.
I was just going to suggest that we decide on an amount tonight, since that's the budget figure, and that we have a discussion about policy at a procedures, policy meeting, and that way we won't waste everyone's time on the subject at this forum.
Counselor Rist?
I was actually going to propose that rules look at this, so that perhaps one thing we could do is at the end of the fiscal year, anybody that went on a trip that the council didn't approve appropriate, we could reimburse them that way, so that the 300 could go to one, if it was only one person, or 10, or nine, but I think that would be, to go to Counselor Kozinski's idea, put it in rules, that's the way the president is guided as to how this reimbursement could occur. I do feel that given Counselor Peak's experience, that we ought to have something there to encourage more attendance. I never went because it's hard to afford it.
Are we just restricted?
So my point is, let's, I agree with Counselor Kozinski, let's pass this budget and see where it goes. The mayor, by the way, might remove it, so, just so you know.
I'd like to move to amend the 900, the figure to $900.
I do.
If I make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, you can, because there's, yeah, amend the original motion, okay? I didn't.
So is there a second to amend that 900?
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Counselor Rist? Yeah?
I think it's proper procedure for me to make a motion for the council to adopt the budget first, and then your amendment would be in, so I'll make a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
And I'd make a.
Well, somebody has to second.
Second, okay, so now there's just some discussion on that, Counselor Coniff, have you said everything you wanted to say? Well, that's possible.
In life, no. On this topic, sure.
Okay. I mean, my, just, two cents on that, I mean, I mean, half the councils now is, is, is almost new, or almost half the council's new, and so, historically, there has not been a really great attendance for this meeting. Counselor Kozinski is gone, Counselor Peak is gone, so it has sort of, it's been one council maybe going to one meeting. My concern is with the budget, if we ask for too much, do we end up with nothing? We may end up with $300, even if we ask for $5,000, but which is, fine. But that's, we can iron that out. So we have a motion, a second. Do you, you want to make a motion for 900?
I want to amend the figure from 300 to 900.
Okay.
Second.
And a second, so there's, so we'll vote on that, all those in favor of the increased amount of $900, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay. So two?
Yep.
Okay, so two, so it still passes. So the motion now then is to approve the budget.
With the $900.
City council budget, with the amount for travel reimbursement, now $900. Additional questions or comments on that? New amendment, motion, Counselor Zerret?
I mean, my only comment would be that even if, even if it's approved. Now the evil eyes. No, that was more of a, a suggestion, like Claire. It, it, just like, much like office supplies, it might not all be spent, right? It's just, it's an available pot of money that we hope that people would not take advantage of, but it's, it's an available resource to us if we so choose to apply for it.
Any other comments on this motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion passes.
Last thing I just want to say is to conclude finance, public hearings, is we will be meeting next week on the 27th of the month at 5:00 PM in Room 1 to conclude our discussion on 21 and 22, which I'll explain when we get to the public hearing, and the $50,000 will be concluded, and we'll begin discussions on the room tax.
Okay, that concludes, I'll adjourn motion to open public hearings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings, looks like Counselor Gomez on the pole location.
Yes, um, we, uh, the public hearing is for, the proposal to locate one solidly own pole, approximately 30 feet from center of Ferry Street, and approximately 300 feet south is a sixing pole. Basically, this pole is going to provide energy to the project that they're going to do in Ferry Street, the mills, basically is, is just for that. There's no infrastructure anyhow, is, is next to the building, so it's, it's basically for that, that's it.
So there's no one here from Eversource tonight, am I correct?
No.
Oh, there is one, okay.
Yes, she is free.
She is a someone.
If you want to come to the podium, and if you want to add anything, if you have anything more you want to add about the location or the use of this pole?
Unless I have questions.
Okay, we'll see if that's the case. Counselor Coniff.
So, whoever, so, the pole itself will be inside that fencing that's now surrounding the mill?
Actually, maybe if you could come to the podium for Counselor Coniff.
I'm just trying to picture where it's located.
So, I'm not familiar with where the fencing is, but.
If you would just say your name for the.
Sorry, Carlacotta from Eversource. So I'm not familiar where the fencing is at this point in time, but it is right next to the man-handrail trail, so you have the fencing for the trail, and then you have the property for the mills, it's going to be right to the right side of the, of the trail, on the grass belt that's there.
I can envision where that is.
Is that, is it just here?
Yeah, yeah, now I got it, okay.
Is that, okay. Yep. Counselor Kozinski?
Pole location, what will be attached to the pole? Pole location, what will be attached to the pole?
So we are bringing three-phase overhead primaries to that pole, and then to feed the mills, it's going to be a three-phase riser that's going to go to a pad mount on the customer property.
Is there another way to say that?
Are you talking about electricity?
Yeah, it's for electricity, so it's going to have electric cables overhead and underground, I'm sorry. It's a course of habit.
Will the overhead wires be car, be carrying the same power that is currently on the street?
Right, exactly. It's going to be an extension of what's there.
So there'll be no change in, in any EMF electromagnetic fields?
No.
There's nothing that would affect the bike paths in, or, or the site itself?
Right.
That would change? The pad won't provide any difference in those?
No.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Eversource? No? Okay, thank you very much for your time. Uh, councillor, I mean councillor, mayor, listen up.
Councillor Mayor.
Does that mean I get a vote on the council?
They were in Northampton, yes.
Oh, we are East Hampton. No intention of crossing the border. Okay, enough. I would speak to this particular application from Eversource and on the behalf of the One Ferry Street project, as we're working through the pre-contract forms with the Massworks grant folks, one of the biggest holdups in the whole process, there could be many, is just getting utilities in line where they need to be, so then we can start the public infrastructure and the roadwork as soon as possible with due public process. But this is the first step, and I would congratulate and thank Eversource, in particular, this young lady who has been a very good partner, not only to the developer, but also to the city, to, to help us understand what is the most expedient way to do this, and an improved electrical service to, to the area in general, in a fell swoop. And right now, we are right in coordination with executing some contracts and, and getting the, so I would urge support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone from the public who would like to address the council on this appropriations of being a public hearing? No? Okay. Councillor Gomez, entertain a motion.
In a form of a motion, when a Eversource pole location request, Ferry Street proposal to locate one soliloquy, I'm sorry. Okay. In a form, form of a motion, I move that the city council approve the location of one soliloquy on pole approximately thirty feet from the center of Ferry Street, approximately three hundred feet south is of exacting, a sixteenth pole, fifty eight slash three J, to extend power and feed to one Ferry Street, the mills, and also that space is reserved on one cross arm and substantial point of the pole for fire and police telephone signal wires belonging to the municipal and used by exclusively for municipal purpos, proposals.
Purposes.
Purposes, sorry.
Second that. Okay, well, motion to second for the approval of the pole. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rist, you want to give us update on twenty-one, twenty-two?
The finance committee has not yet made a recommend, is not prepared to make a recommendation on twenty-one and twenty-two. The reason for this is there's an ongoing negotiation between the administration, the mayor, and the insurance advisory committee on this subject. There was, right before our last meeting, a proposed agreement, which was responded to by the mayor and the labor attorney, so the committee felt that we ought to let that situation play out, in hopes that an agreement can be made, so that this might not need to be voted on. However, we will meet on the twenty-seventh to make a final decision, one way or the other, and for this evening, even though I'm going to move that we continue this decision to the next meeting in the council, to continue this public hearing, if the mayor or anyone from the insurance advisory committee or any members of the public wish to speak to it, that is their right, because we did have this scheduled. However, there will be another meeting and a public hearing when the vote for the council will be taken, will be the first meeting in March.
Just quickly to, that myself and a representative from personnel met with the IAC this afternoon, and, and kind of hashed out a couple of next steps, and we'll take it from there. One point of clarification, I am working on, and it came up today's meeting, twenty-one and twenty-two have been put forward in consideration to this council to vote on, and I am looking at the disposition of, of what happens next, if an agreement is, is reached or not, and if council still has to vote twenty-one and twenty-two up or down with reasoning, or if it's withdrawn without prejudice, what, what liability that might open the, the city to? Because it.
And you're getting an attorney's opinion on that?
Yeah. I mean, we're going to talk, the IAC and I are hopefully going to have a couple more conversations, but that's something I need to follow up on, to make sure that everything is properly disposed of, one way or the other.
Can I ask if you think by next, our next finance meeting, you'll have information to that effect? Or is that going to take you longer?
I'm, I'm not sure. I don't, I, I don't know. I mean, I certainly will try, I'm, I'm not sure if I'll have all the information to, to give enough to the attorney.
Can you also provide the finance committee with the recent opinion from the labor attorney? I think you said you did that.
Oh, I did. Yes, I know.
Could you send that to us?
I'll do it right now from my phone.
For the full council, if you could.
Yeah, I'll copy, um, Barbara, yes.
Hearing this, if the negotiations haven't been concluded by the twenty-seventh, we may be presenting this without a recommendation from the finance committee. I'm just saying that out loud, I don't know where the committee will want to be that night, but I would rather let the negotiations continue than force an opinion. But I'll wait to hear from the finance director and the mayor on that on the twenty-seventh. Anyway, I am going to make a motion, unless there's others who want to speak to this, Mr. President?
You're going to make a motion?
To continue it.
Oh, okay, okay.
I make a motion that the finance, that the council continue acceptance of thirty-two B twenty-one and twenty-two, public hearing to the next meeting in these chambers.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second.
I'll abstain.
Okay, right. A motion to second to continue the public hearings.
Can you accept a second from Peggy?
Now that I, yeah, I take back my second.
I'll second, understood.
Okay. We still have a motion to second to continue the public hearing for chapter twenty-one, twenty-two to March sixth. Councillor Rist?
Point of clarification, Councillors Coniff and Councillors Kozinski have had to recuse themselves for conflict of interest on this subject. It is not because they don't want to vote.
Thank you.
And, and, and at me there, too.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Glad we're not voting tonight. So that's three abstentions. How many votes does that give us?
Six. We have six councillors left, I could still vote on it.
No, I'm talking about tonight, we have five votes left. We have eight people here, okay. We have three abstentions, so we have five votes to move, to continue the public hearing, okay?
All right, just would like to comment, I would like to add the words, appearance of conflict of interest, apparent, appearance, what could appear to be a conflict of interest, but not be a conflict of interest, maybe is one, is my reason. So I didn't want to.
Okay. So a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. Abstain. Okay, motion still passes.
Move, then we close the public hearing.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Stained? I think we left off at public safety, Councillor Gomez.
We've been met yet, because our meeting's going to be in March fifth, I just want to ask for an extension of the pedestrian safety review, ninety days.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, a motion to second for the pedestrian safety review for a ninety-day extension. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. That's concluded. Okay. Appointments, Councillor Coniff?
So tonight, we, prior to this meeting, we reviewed the eleven nominations for the community relations committee and an additional three nominations for other committees in the city. So I will, we'll go through, I think we need to vote on these individually, as opposed to as a group.
Right.
Because, because.
I don't think you have to, but if you want to.
Because there may be people in here that, I mean, we can try it that way.
Well.
Councillor Rist?
Unless any member objects to any particular person on the list, I would think a group nomination is okay. So I would ask the councillors to speak up, otherwise that's, that's a long thing, and it's just, it might not be necessary, that's my opinion.
Okay, so my only comment to that is, know all these people already, then that's great, then we can do that. If you don't, I have background on some of them, and then in addition, we did have a, a split vote on an individual down in subcommittee.
Because I actually.
And an abstention.
I had an abstention, and I guess Councillor Rist, you would probably have to abstain on one of those persons, so would your abstention be considered across the board if that was, if we voted it that way?
So, hearing this, then we have to do it individually, you're correct?
This is what I thought.
All right, okay.
Okay, I will go as quickly as I can. First nominee, Armand Lapointe, with an expiration, they're all twelve thirty-one, twenty-one expiration. Armand, I spoke to him, he's a longtime resident, wants to help the people in this community, and he seemed like a really good fit, the community, the committee, subcommittee voted three to zero to move him forward. So I'll, I'll take a motion unless we have any discussion, I'll take a motion to approve Armand Lapointe.
You make the motion.
I will make a motion to approve Armand Lapointe to the Community Relations Committee term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Second. A motion to second to approve Armand Lapointe, Community Relations Commission, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Oh, you're going to abstain?
I'm going to abstain, just to clarify, I've got, with my, with my proximity to one of the nominees, and therefore the entire process, I'm, I'm going to abstain from all these votes.
From all of them? Okay. Okay. The next one, John Norman, I will let, I, I didn't personally get a chance to talk to him, I do know he's a councillor at the middle school, in the subcommittee, we approved him three to zero. Is there any additional discussion? I make a motion to approve John Norman to the CRC with twelve, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one expiration.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion passes. One abstention.
The next one is Jim Valencourt. Jim, we, this is, this, we had a, a one for, one against, one abstention on Jim, this is the only situation on all of the nominees that we had, and the conflict here, or the, the difference of opinion, I guess, was related to some Facebook feelings that Facebook is a little harsh, his personal Facebook page is a little harsh, and that would possibly render him unable to provide unbiased information and care to the issues that came before the Community Relations Committee. I don't happen to agree with that, I think that, that is a component of Mr. Valencourt's personal free speech rights, and he is a, he's a member of a number of committees in this city, he's very committed, there are a lot of people in this community who trust him and would come to him, and so, a, a, and then philosophically speaking for me, I think that when you have a committee of a lot of people handling a lot of difficult issues, you want to have people with a diverse view and potentially create a little conflict, because I think that's what generates positive momentum and thoughts. If you had, this is the example I use downstairs, if you have eleven people sitting at a table all nodding and agreeing, not a whole lot's going to happen, and it could just be a really ineffective committee. So in my, from my perspective, I, I voted for Jim to move forward. Do we have any discussion before I make a motion? Or do I have to make the motion?
Well, we can do it once motion's made.
I make a motion to move Jim Valencourt, to approve Jim Valencourt to the CRC with a twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one expiration date.
Second.
Okay, a motion to second, additional questions or comments on this topic? I would, I'll just start off, I was the one who had to abstain, Jim's a friend of mine, and there's one thing ethics is pretty straight about, is like an exchange of money, and he has worked at our farm, and I paid him money, so I think that's a pretty straightforward, that I, I am not able to vote on this nomination, that was the abstention. Additional comments or questions for this, Councillor Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. President, I was the person who voted, voted against it. Like I said at the meeting to the chairwoman, I agree and disagreed with her in a few things. I agree with her that Facebook is your personal page, you can post whatever you want, and thank God we are in a free country, that you can do that. But at the same time, this committee, the, the we create after the spirit and the police and the, the mayor presented to us, is to bring the community together, you know, looking for relationship with the community, and while he posed on Facebook, there is a social page that everybody can see, it could offend a lot of people. And because this particular committee is for particular reasons, so that's why I, I vote against it. If he was applying for another committee, probably I would say yes, but for the meaning of the committee, that's, that's the main reason that I say no.
Okay, Councillor Rist?
I tend to agree with Councillor Gomez, although I'll vote in favor of the nomination. I think now that he is going to be a member of this committee, we've all discussed what Facebook and these sites have to offer to social commentary, but now that this gentleman is on a committee that has this kind of very important duty, I think I would advise that we, he curtail in anything on Facebook as we do, as it relates to discussion of agenda topics, because open meeting law does pertain to this committee. So I think Councillor Gomez's comments are very pertinent, but I don't think it should disqualify the person. I think it's a learning moment for all the members of that committee that open meeting law does pertain to this committee, and that we have to be very careful what we say online if it starts a discussion of a topic that might be before us. Plus, this committee has a different perspective on what the subjects are that they're dealing with than our council even, so that's my opinion.
Okay, any additional questions or comments?
Just a clarification, I think what Councillor Rist is saying is that any discussion, anything posted in social media shall not become a deliberation amongst committee members, and one of the things I think we're all struggling with is whether or not a posting in social media that may be, for example, with the council, may be read by Councillor Pique and Councillor Coniff, but not read by one, one or two or three of the others, because we're not necessarily, just didn't see it that day, but there's deliberation, if a majority of us end up commenting, becoming part of a deliberation, that's a violation of the open meeting law, so we have to be very cognizant, and every member of this new committee will have to be very cognizant, thinking to matters before the committee. And that may not be a position in which one feels comfortable, that you then become restricted to making your comments and discussions in public forum only at a meeting in person.
Okay. Additional questions or comments?
Do you have, is there a motion on the floor?
I believe that I did, and you seconded it.
I have a motion on the floor. And additional questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Actually, I, I, can I do a hand vote, or does it be?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a hand vote, just so I can see the ayes, please? Okay, and then abstentions, three.
Oh, one, and a no. Who else? Oh. No, I'm abstaining.
No, no, she's a.
Who's abstaining?
I'm only myself, and JP?
And JP.
And that was for.
And Joe. You're abstaining, JP?
I'm, I'm. You're just abstaining, okay.
Well, then it's. I mean, no.
And Joe.
Okay.
Okay, so how, how did that end up?
Four votes in favor, three abstentions, and one opposed, if I, am I correct?
Okay, all right, should we, should we do a? Should we do a?
Councillor Rist, do you want to reconsider your abstention for the whole?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. President?
Councillor Rist? Councilor Rist?
On virtue of the rules, I move for reconsideration. If the council would agree to reconsider this nomination at the next council meeting, the rules state that reconsideration can be dealt with if nominated, if spoken to tonight, as long as the council agrees to at least reconsider this, we have time to think about this. I'd ask someone to second that, I'd ask the council to approve it, reconsideration is allowed at the next meeting.
We'll second that.
So it's a motion.
Okay, a motion, a second, for reconsideration of this appointment, specific appointment for the next city council meeting, additional questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No, any abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention?
I think the abstentions should still con, speak abstaining, but we do have enough votes to at least reconsider it. Okay, thank you.
So the people who are abstaining were the same ones that abstained before?
I would assume so.
Yep.
To the reconsideration.
Which is Joe, JP, and Owen.
Yes, yes, no.
Which then could, which is a short.
No, Omar, you said okay to reconsider it, so we have five votes in favor.
Okay. Okay, so reconsideration for that one appointment on the next city council meeting. Councilor Coniff, if you can continue to your list here.
Okay, the next one is Dr. Abby Goldberg. Abby is a professor at Clark University. She is renowned expert in LGBTQ marriage, children, adoption. She's a huge advocate of, I will say, our community, the gay community, so I, I enthusiastically support Abby's approval to move forward. So I'll make a motion to move Dr. Abby Goldberg to the CRC, approve the CRC with a twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one.
I will second.
Okay, a motion, a second, additional questions or comments? I'll just, again, I was thrilled to see her name, I believe her resume is longer than my life story. And so I, I think she'd be a great addition. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, motion passes.
I unfortunately have to abstain from Dr. Goldberg.
Because of your proximity?
Whatever.
Because of my proximity, yes, sir.
Okay, then. The next nominee is Margaret Kirstein. Margaret is eleven and a half years in the city, she works, has spent thirty-five years working in high conflict domestic relation issues in court. I believe she said she was a psychologist. She loves the city and wants to work on its behalf, so I'll make a motion to move, to approve Margaret Kirstein in CRC with twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one expiration date.
Second. A motion, second, to move Margaret Kirstein to the Community Relations Committee, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
One abstention.
Abstain.
Oh, one abstention, sorry.
The next, Mary Lou Splain. Mary Lou is in the Treehouse community, she is, been here since 2008. She is interested in helping to create and keep our neighborhoods diverse. She believes there is a lot of diversity in East Hampton, but it is not entirely visible. So I will make a motion to approve Mary Lou Splain to the CRC twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one.
Second.
A motion, a second, approve Mary Lou Splain, Community Relations Commission, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Splain, I abstain.
Splain.
Wow. Next one is Alyssa O'Leary. Alyssa's been here three and a half years. Her feeling is that, she lives here, she works here, her kids go to school here, and she is deeply, loves the city very much, and believes that with all of that, with her roots here for living and working, and her kids going to school here, this is, this is a time for her to step up and be a part of the community in a very meaningful way. So I make a motion to approve Alyssa O'Leary, the CRC twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one.
Second.
A motion, second, approve Alyssa O'Leary, CRC, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Next is Jane Hamel. Jane is a luthier at Goat Peak Strings, look at me, and she's awesome. So I'll make a motion to approve Jane Hamel to the CRC twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one.
Second.
A motion, second, approve Jane Hamel, CRC, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Next one, Emily Britton. Emily has been here since 2008, she originally had her career in multimedia production, she did not find that very satisfying, so she moved into the psychology realm and is now a, I believe she said, group therapist at the VA. She loves this community and has a yellow lab, just saying. So I make a motion to approve Emily Britton to the CRC twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one expiration.
Second.
A motion, second, approve Emily Britton to CRC, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Next one is Rebecca Pasa. Rebecca is an attorney. She wants to see cohesive neighboring community, she talked about unity and diversity coexisting peacefully, and she was just really, she has, she has a longstanding history here, she, she went to Mount Holyoke, and her grandmother was from Mount Holyoke, graduating class of nineteen eighteen, so yay. Motion to approve Rebecca Pasa to the CRC twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one.
Second.
Motion, second, approve Rebecca Pasa, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Last one for the CRC is Patty Doherty. Patty used to be the athletic director at the high school, now she's had a change of career, but she is very committed to this city, so I will make a motion to approve Patty Doherty, Patricia Doherty, to the CRC twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one expiration.
Second.
A motion, second, approve Patty Doherty to CRC, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Last three, these are for various other committees. First one, Haley Wood. I didn't get a chance to talk to her, but the mayor indicated that this is, this appointment is highly aligned to the Council on Aging and focusing on the elder community of which Haley is very committed to and involved in, so I'll make a motion to approve Haley Wood to the Affordable and Fair Housing Committee, term expiration twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one. The subcommittee approved her three to zero.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second, approve Haley Wood to the Affordable Housing Committee, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Next one is Peter Nelson for the ECA Cultural Council. This is also, we, in an attempt to get that council to full strength, we, in order to get the, the Old Town Hall kind of up and operational from an arts perspective, he has met with Pascalina from the Arts Council, and the mayor has also spoken with him, so we also approved Peter three to zero, so I will make a motion to approve Peter Nelson to the ECA Cultural Council, twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one expiration.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
And the last one is for Deanna Wertz, I apologize, Deanna Metavir, to the Conservation Commission, twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one. Deanna has been here for about a year and a half, she's from Raleigh, North Carolina, lived there, grew up there, went to school there, she is, is back, she is here now, loves it here, and is an environmental scientist, so this committee seems to be a good fit for her. I'll make a motion to approve Deanna Wertz, Metavir, to the Conservation Commission, twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one expiration.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
And the, we have set the next meeting to be March fifth?
Sixth.
Sixth?
Sixth, yep.
At five-thirty for the next appointment, subcommittee.
Do you want to move this?
Oh, sure, I can do that.
That's Jane Sakowitz.
Okay. A motion to move, do you have the thing?
No.
I don't have any. Jane Sakowitz for Personnel Director, position twelve thirty-one twenty-two-one, to the appointment subcommittee.
Second.
A motion, second, to move the appointment of Jane Sakowitz as the Personnel Director, appointment subcommittee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
That concludes.
Councilor Rist?
I just wanted to compliment Councilor Coniff and the entire appointments committee. Your review of all the appointments that have been coming forward, and how thorough they are, is welcome, and has not been a constant with the council in all my years on the council. And I, I like the fact, and I know the homework you put in to get us this information on every applicant is extremely valuable. Thank you very much.
You're here.
Ordinance, Councilor Zare.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you see, we have a pretty robust agenda. A little housekeeping first, I will make a motion as a group to request a ninety-day extension for both of the topics, continued review of adult-use cannabis establishment topics, and the zoning ordinance amendment request for cannabis equity applicants, applications. I'd very like to request a ninety-day extension for both of those, if I may.
Okay, a motion, a second, to approve ninety-day extensions on the adult-use cannabis establishment and the cannabis equity applications, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
So in regards to old business, we met last week, we had a very interesting discussion with our new business. As I mentioned earlier, there was fortunately some clarification about the discussion regarding the on-off street parking on residences' lawns, et cetera, as well as on streets. It was a really well-attended meeting, I appreciate everyone who came out, I'd like to see more of our subcommittee meetings like that, and so I'll extend the invitation now to any meetings, it's really, our city does not, our city runs on our residents, and so resident participation in meetings is critical. That said, I think we mostly had discussion on background, we didn't really move forward on any language. We also met with Mr. Nick Votrin and his partner regarding the Petal Tavern, and had a discussion on that, I think most of that, unfortunately Chief Alberti was in attendance. There are many complications in regards to that discussion, both in terms of our current open container laws, as well as Kelly, I am blanking on her last name, from the, like, Richie, thank you, from the licensing board was in attendance, and made some notes in terms of liability in regards to if this is something we want to move forward, we will need licensing around it in regards to them being held accountable for food services, service to minors, et cetera. The fact that the Manhattan Rail Trail is a public way, and, not unlike our streets or the pond, but certainly like the pond, we discussed whether there should be a fee charged for commercial use of the bike path, do we want commercial use of the bike path, and then again, the issue circling back regarding open container and this, this proposal. So that is an ongoing discussion, again, we did not recommend any specific language. We did not discuss the cannabis equity applications, we did have a discussion, again, with Chief Alberti regarding the open container alcohol and cannabis, and agreed to table that for now, as we're waiting for the CCC to put forward their recommendations regarding social consumption, et cetera, which will probably come out this summer. I think it's fair to say, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor Coniff, that there was some general agreement on amending the, the language as it pertained to amending the alcohol open container, but we still have to have further discussion. There was some good clarification provided by Chief Alberti regarding enforcement of state and local ordinances, and why to have either, as well as some of the discussions around the proposal to include separate, potentially separate fines for consumption close to schools or daycares. So that is our old business, and then I think we have some new business put forward by Councilors Coniff, Coniff and Gomez, and if, if, if I may, Mr. President, I'd like to turn, regarding the welcoming community trust ordinance piece that they submitted, I'd like to turn it over to them to just summarize this, if I may?
So tonight, we're introducing a City of East Hampton welcoming community trust ordinance, modeled largely after the one recently passed in Springfield, and I'll just, I will just read into the minutes, my, our introductory rationale for this, and then we can make a motion to move it to ordinance. On January third, 2018, the city council approved a resolution, a resolution which states in part that the City of East Hampton and its representatives shall not condone or tolerate any form of discrimination on the basis of race, color, religious creed, age, familial status, national origin, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression. This resolution demonstrates the city's ongoing practice of providing a welcoming community for all residents, visitors, and those who work in our city. Councilor Omar Gomez and I are tonight introducing a new ordinance proposal, City of East Hampton welcoming community trust ordinance. This ordinance will continue to affirm our commitment to providing and supporting a safe and welcoming community. In addition, and perhaps more importantly, this ordinance will strengthen the collaborative environment and trust between representatives of the city and the residents and visitors of East Hampton. At a time when the city is forging a new Community Relations Committee, this ordinance will align directly with the goals of that committee and the overarching philosophy of community policing, something the East Hampton Police Department is very committed to building. This ordinance does not direct the police to behave in a way that is counter to normal and customary police investigatory techniques, nor does it change the way the police investigate crimes. If a crime has been committed, the perpetrator, regardless of immigration status, will be arrested and prosecuted. What this ordinance is designed to do is to remove an arbitrary review of immigration status when there is no viable reason to do so. Certainly, if there are federal or state laws requiring immigration notice, notification, this ordinance would not override that. We respectfully request your careful consideration, consideration of this proposed ordinance. Councilor Gomez?
Thank you, Councilor Coniff. El tres de enero del dos mil dieciocho, los concejales de East Hampton aprobaron una resolución que en parte leía así. La ciudad de East Hampton y sus representantes no deberán de consentir y/o tolerar ninguna manera de discriminación en base a raza, color, creencia religiosa, edad, nación de origen, estatus de migración, orientación sexual, identidad de género o expresión. Esta resolución demuestra que la ciudad practica y promueve, que todos son bienvenidos en esta comunidad. La concejal Coniff, y yo estamos introduciendo esta nueva ordenanza, welcoming trust ordinance, esta ordenanza hará y afirmará nuestro compromiso para promover una comunidad segura y acogedora. Esta ordenanza fortalecerá la colaboración entre los representantes de la ciudad, los residentes y sus visitantes. Esta ordenanza está directamente alineada con las metas y filosofías del nuevo comité de la comunidad, Community Relation Committee, en cual donde el departamento de la policía está muy interesado en que esto así pase. Esta ordenanza no le da ninguna directriz a la policía, a que actúe de ninguna forma diferente o que cambie su técnica de investigación, ni tampoco le ordena que cambie la manera de investigar los crímenes. Si un crimen es cometido, el perpetrador será arrestado y será procesado sin importar su condición migratoria. Para lo que esta ordenanza está diseñada es para que se remueva la revisión arbitrariamente de la condición migratoria cuando no haya razón alguna para estar solicitándola. Ciertamente, esta ordenanza no va por encima de ninguna ley estatal o federal, que esta requiera de una notificación de la condición migratoria. Con respeto, le pedimos la consideración la propuesta de esta ordenanza. Gracias. Thanks. Basically, I see in Spanish what, what Councilor Coniff said.
Whole different story. So I would like to make.
So you're opposed?
I would like to make a motion to move this welcoming community trust ordinance to the ordinance subcommittee.
Second.
A motion, second. I'm gonna make an amendment to also move this to our newly-formed CRC Commission, I think this is one of the reasons why we created this commission, so I'm gonna make a motion to move, to also move this to the CRC. Is there a second?
Are you mending the motion?
Yeah.
So the motion is to send it to both ordinance and CRC?
Okay, that was my, that was my question.
Second.
So I'll second the amendment.
Do I have to vote, is it, does it be, is it amendment, or is it just one?
Why don't we just have?
One motion.
Okay, so there you go.
I take my second back.
I remove my, I remove my motion.
So you guys had it both ordinance and.
I will now make a motion to move the welcoming community trust ordinance to the ordinance subcommittee as well as the Community Relations Committee.
Second.
Okay, well, second. Additional questions or discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
And, Councilor, the regular chair, Councilor, the chair of our committee, Councilor Derby, is not available tonight, obviously, and we will need to discuss with him our next meeting, which we will, the date of which we will deliberate, oh, sorry, yes, Mr. President?
No, I just realized, there's new business that's on your thing for ordinance, too, I, it's the, the over-putting licenses, which typically go to.
Oh, is that, are we, are we, is that, are we admitting that? Is it, okay. So I haven't concluded yet, so I will introduce this as soon as I can, as soon as I have the say. It was my full intention to do.
So I just, I was completely.
Absolutely.
It's hard, because he doesn't take a breath, but yeah, go ahead.
Pick on Mr. Fox, if I could.
Uh, uh, we will set a date as soon as Counselor Derby is available, and I will, we will inform the city clerk immediately of that decision as soon as we have it. And, uh, I would also like to move, so just to clarify, Mr. President, this was, this was not on the agenda. Are you introducing this?
Yeah, let me, yes. This was something I do, so I, before Alan left from the mayor's office, this was a request from both the mayor's office as well as the Licensing Board. I've attached a letter from the Licensing Board with her rationale of why they're requesting additional over quarter liquor licenses. So I am sort of moving this forward, um, in combination with, uh, the mayor's office as well as the Licensing Board, and it's requesting a additional all alcoholic beverage on-premise licenses for additional wine, malt beer, on-premise licenses and two additional wine malt off-premises licenses. Again, these are what are typically referred to as our over quarter liquor licenses. With the, um, development of one Ferry Street and other buil, areas, we figured, uh, it would be important to have these as, um, economic tools. So that's just a quick summary of the question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as I am in close proximity to this agenda, I'd, I'd like to move this new business, uh, I'd like to make a motion to move this, uh, new business to the Ordinance Subcommittee for discussion.
Second.
Take, okay, motion second to move to ordinance, the request for over quarter liquor licenses. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Uh, thus concludes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, property, Counselor Kozinski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. No new developments on the dog park issue. We're still awaiting word from the CPA to have some consideration of the matter. We were looking for some funds to study the subject, uh, with regard, so I would like to make an extension, even though we're not quite up to the deadline, request ninety days for that matter.
Second.
Okay, motion second for ninety-day extension for the municipal dog park discussion. Additional questions or comments? Counselor, is there a?
Uh, well, I'd just like to clarify too. I don't know if you know Counselor Kozinski, but I received word from, um, City Clerk Jeff Bag that they did submit, uh, an application to CPA for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, right, but there's been no consideration.
Correct.
No consideration yet, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted you, I don't know if you knew.
When is the next meeting, Counselor Riss, may I ask? Tuesday.
I was gonna comment that the reason we haven't done anything on it is because we haven't gotten the application. So I am informed this evening that we have an application, and it, we meet this Tuesday. So if it is indeed on the agenda, will we be discussing that?
Great.
This Tuesday.
And so anyone interested in, in hopefully advocating for a, a municipal dog park and CPA funds for initial designs, please attend. I'm sorry, I interrupted a motion.
No, 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 just discussion.
Just discussion. I, I did want to ask what time the meeting is for the CPA and the location, if you're aware.
God, I think it's six thirty. Room one.
I think it is.
Six thirty, room one.
Six thirty, room one.
Excellent. Uh, we also-
Actually, we still have to vote on your extension. So we have motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, please, should it be appropriate to introduce the new business?
Yep.
That has come from the planner, and we'd like to set a time, I believe, when the planner's available for the Property Committee to meet. Essentially, the subject is at two twenty-two Park Street. There is a proposal to do a three point one megawatt solar array. This, so given that that proposal is in effect and has been endorsed by the Planning Board, one of the conditions is that the city receive an acceptance of an easement through the property. Uh, there had been discussions in the, with the Planning Board that if the array was so large so as to preclude an easement, then the city would not be able to have an important potential bike trail and path. So I'd like to move that matter to, did we move that already? Property?
Second.
I haven't seen it before.
It was under communications.
This is the first time I saw it.
I thought we moved it earlier.
You're right.
We moved it earlier, yeah.
Yeah, it was under communications.
It's been a long meeting.
Oh, you did. That's right. Out of, out of, it was out of order.
It was under.
Okay. We'll be discussing that and, uh, at a time to be determined, when we can coordinate with Jeff Bag.
Okay, and that concludes.
That concludes.
Great. Uh, Rules of Government Relations, Counselor Pete?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we're gonna be meeting a week from today at six P.M. Uh, we're going to be discussing at least two things. Uh, the main thing that I, I would really like to discuss is, um, uh, MGL Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one, C and a half, which, for those who are just tuning in, is a, uh, tax abatement for seniors under a certain income. It's a, it's a revision to the way that we currently do our tax abatements. And just to clarify, um, we can't really vote this up right now. We can just vote whether or not to put it on the VAT ballot. It has to be approved by the voters. So the question is, do we ask the voters? There's a lot of, um, discussion about what we can do for our seniors, especially, you know, that, there was a big discussion during the schools. This is one proposal. It is not perfect. It potentially, uh, is interesting, and I, so hopefully we can, um, we can report that out, um, at that, at the next meeting. Um, we also will be discussing a new Rule seventeen B, uh, which we had discussed a bit already, and hopefully we can wrap that up as well. Um, so I'd really encourage anyone who wants to do a deep dive into the pros and cons of different, uh, state-accepted tax abatement policies to show up. Uh, it should be, I, I say this not even a little sarcastically, it should be a really interesting, uh, conversation. Um, so, uh, in addition, I would like to move one new, uh, item to the agenda, and that is, uh, a request to consider the creation of a municipal light plant. So municipal light plant makes it sound like we're providing lighting for the city, that that's, it's just the technical term for the sort of legal statute that we have to adopt by the state regulations in order to put anything up on the poles. So, uh, the char, or the Telecom Committee has been looking into the viability of potentially doing a fiber utility at some point. Um, it could have really substantial economic development benefits. It would mean that we need to put things on the poles. Uh, in order to have the legal authority to do that, we need to become a municipal light plant. In order to become a municipal light plant, we need to take two different votes in two different fiscal years with, uh, six, with, you know, the two-thirds majority each time, and then after that, the voters need to approve it. So if we don't approve it in this fiscal year and the next fiscal year, so starting in July, we wouldn't have a chance to ask the voters this November. We would either have to wait until twenty twenty-one, or we'd have to schedule an expensive special election. Since this does not cost us anything, I don't anticipate it being a deeply controversial matter with the council or the voters, but we do need to move in a somewhat timely fashion on it. Uh, it's sort of a complicated issue, so if anyone has any questions.
Okay, Counselor Koz, I mean, this-
I just had a quick question on, on the subject. In your deliberations, uh, I certainly heard you talk about poles and stringing wires within the poles. Do you know what percentage of the city is not served by poles and with, are served with underground utilities, and how would we address that subject? What, what's the thinking?
To the extent that there's conduits-
Or would the folks who have con, underground utilities be not served?
Right. I mean, I don't think that the, that the regulatory process is any different. The idea is of somebody else. We don't own those, that's the thing. Uh, you know, if we were a city that owned our poles, then none of this would be an issue. We don't. And so this is the sort of statute we need to do. I believe that that's, applies to the conduits as well, but I can look more into that. I don't have a, I do not-
It's certainly something that will come up.
Sure. I mean, and some of those conduits might be owned privately, but yeah, you're right. We will have to look into that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Okay?
All right, well, then I'll make a motion to move or request to consider the creation of a municipal light plant to the Rules and Governments Rela, Government Relations Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, motion second to send to Rules, the creation of municipal light plant. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Thus concludes. Unless anyone has anything on, oh, sorry.
We have, uh, our next meeting tomorrow night. We move Valentine's Day to tomorrow. I mean, the meeting, not the day. So we have two meetings within the next two weeks. Uh, tomorrow night's meeting will be the same agenda that was supposed to happen last week, and includes, if we get to it, ranked choice voting. So if you're interested, it's at room one, uh, at six P.M. I also have a comment to make that I would like to propose that we, uh, regarding the Welcoming Community Trust Ordinance and City Attorney Review. I want to compliment Counselors Coniff and Gomez for a very well-thought-out and very specific ordinance, unlike the others we received. That, to me, helps a lot with how we will deliberate. In this regard, uh, with regard to our current charter, I am going to make a request. I write this request without any preconception whether the ordinance proposed by Counselors Coniff and Gomez should be passed, but rather to review all such types of ordinances as compliant with law in our charter. Seeing the proposed ordinance, I am requesting immediate review by the city attorney. I have come around to the fact that the city council does want the ability to write these types of policy ordinances directed at city employees or any other type. Indeed, I now feel that the council should have this type of authority. When we reviewed this in the spring of two thousand eighteen, we had conflicting opinions from attorneys regarding whether our current charter allows for such a policy ordinance. That discussion led myself, as Chair of the Charter Review Committee, to see if we could write new language in the charter that might clean up any conflict between executive and legislative authority that might prevent such an ordinance. In that respect, I have already asked the city attorney to review executive versus legislative authority as relates to the previous Safe Cities ordinances. This new ordinance provides opportunity for our new city attorney to give a fresh look at this issue if indeed we feel, he feels a conflict does exist. Also, I believe we are to, if we are to write such a policy ordinance, the city should be on firm legal ground. The city attorney in his review will give the ordinance committee advice on what, if any, tenants need to be amended so as to be compliant with our current charter and state and federal law. If indeed he does find language that needs amending, or even finds the entire, entire ordinance is not allowed, I would like to immediately propose corrections in our charter, so a new and amended ordinance could possibly be written in our next council term, if desired. It is my hope that this new language will find its way into the charter during our current charter review. I therefore move that the president send the Welcoming and Community Trust Ordinance to the city attorney for immediate review. I do so with the hope that we can get an opinion within a month or two so that we can, can add it to deliberations at our charter review. That's the form of a motion.
Second. My concern, though, is that, and Counselor, Counselor Coniff, is, is this literally the final wording? Because I don't want to send a preliminary thing to the lawyer, and then you guys tweak it, and then we have to send it again. I would rather when we have the final version.
I don't agree, because what you want is the city attorney's opinion, so that the, if there's language that the committee wants to amend, that they would do it. They could not agree to it. My point on that is that this will take a long time for the ordinance committee to review. I assume they have a huge agenda, and I'd like the city attorney to get at it, 'cause if he finds that there's tenants in it that do violate the charter, I'd like the charter committee to change the charter this year. Um, so it's a matter of timing for me.
My concern is that, let's say he doesn't find anything wrong.
If he doesn't find anything wrong-
Then we change it.
Then we change.
Excuse me, I got two people yelling.
So you give, okay, so you give him this version.
Right.
And he thinks it's spectacular, which I anticipate he will.
Okay.
Then we, in our deliberation, as an ordinance subcommittee, we decide that perhaps we can make some changes to it. Now we have to go back to the lawyer and say, we made changes. Can you look at it now? What, what Counselor McCoy is suggesting is that we do it once after we get the final version of this, after we deliberate as a subcommittee.
I don't disagree with that process. My point is only about timing and charter review. He is now deliberating at my request, executive versus legislative authority as related to the last, and that may be sufficient. I only saw this as an opportunity to, we, we look at that.
Okay.
But if the council doesn't want to do it, I understand. I, I understand that 'cause of the cost of two reviews by the city attorney.
Now, we have a, a motion, a second, but I would like to hear from our mayor, so would you mind?
So I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, and Mayor, would you like to speak to?
Um, I would say at this point that, uh, there are no funds to support such motion as well as charter review on a legal basis or legal, uh, city attorney. We don't have the money.
Would, would we have funds if we approved it?
That is, that is the deliberation of this council, but I would not want to, uh, have something go forward, uh, that cannot be funded and, uh, would hold up anything else.
Okay, then I will withdraw the motion and not make it, uh, because I would certainly not want the city. I'll make the motion in the future, then if we pass the supplemental appropriation, maybe I'll make the motion. So, just so that everybody understands, it has nothing to do with whether I approved the ordinance or not. It's because I think we should have these policy ordinances. It's, our city, last city attorney said we should do this. There was conflict from other attorneys. Counselor Newman is here. Um, but I would like our new attorney to look at it as well as give us a way to do this, 'cause I think the council should be able to write these policies without controversial opinions. Also, it puts us on firm legal. So that's where I was, that's why I did it, but I won't make a motion now.
That's okay. I appreciate you not making the motion. However, I have a recollection that the council voted that we could do-
That was my recollection as well.
-our passing of an ordinance. And I guess that would be subject to mayoral rejection or acceptance, or subject to legal challenge. But that, that this council had stood and said, yes, we have the ability to make such an ordinance, if we chose to. That's not saying we chose to, but if we chose to. Just wanted to lay that back on the table.
I, I have a comment.
Counselor Riss?
Uh, yes, we did, but we didn't have an ordinance at the time, and the council's review at the time was about whether or not the charter allowed it, and it was the opinion of the counselors that we should be able to do that. My reasoning for this is that if we're going to actually pass an ordinance, and the city attorney says, no, you can't, and we still pass it, I believe that puts the city in legal jeopardy, which is why I would rather have us on firm legal ground if we choose to do this, because, for instance, if a group of city employees or a city employee is disciplined because they violate this, they could sue us based on the fact that the city attorney said, no, you can't write this ordinance. So my point on all of this is to get us on firm legal ground in the future, uh, either now or in the future through the charter. I realize that the council has the right to disagree with the city attorneys. That doesn't mean we should. So I'm only bringing that forward 'cause I'd like to clear it up, 'cause even though we disagreed with the city attorney at the time, that doesn't mean it's the final thing we're saying. And we didn't have an ordinance before us. We had a discussion of whether or not we could. Now we have an ordinance. That's, uh, neither here nor there, I'm, I'm not gonna ask the city attorney to review it now.
Okay, and you withdrew your motion, and so in that-
I removed it. I'm done. I've concluded. Charter review for me will meet tomorrow. Sorry.
Okay, so I, I think we're done with all businesses. I'll adjourn a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? See you March sixth.